It being six o'clock, I will call this March 14th, 2022, meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Would you please join me in the pledge?
Aye.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have the joint meeting with the school committee and the town moderator, so I'll turn this over to John Curland.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Welcome. We have two elections, one for an alternate and one for a standing school committee position. I note that two of the candidates are not present. I found out just a few minutes ago, care of Selectman LeFevre, that Brian Strip, who is running for the school committee position, had some surgery today and is unable to attend. So we'll start with the one candidate who is here. And so we'll go with the alternate position and I will entertain, and I call this meeting to motion, this meeting to order. We do have a quorum of the Select Board and we do have a quorum of the school committee. So I will take, entertain motions for the alternate position.
I'll nominate Claire Jeanot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? There being none, we will close it and I will give the candidate a few moments to just address both boards.
Thank you, John. I know everybody, but I'll say for the public that my name's Claire Jeanot and I'm seeking reappointment as an alternate member. I was appointed to this two years ago to finish an unfilled term. And it was really, I just want to say, a very good fit because I have experience. Having worked there before, I know, in fact, with Superintendent Pidgen, she was a colleague of mine in the admin team 10 years ago or longer, and so we worked together very well. We all know what else happened in March 2020 when I first got appointed, COVID struck, and so the whole first year and a half or so of our meetings were remote, similar to you, and it made it difficult to get to know everybody because you don't have that sort of conversation in the hallway before the meeting with somebody or anything else, and you don't even see people in the room the same way you do when you're in a live meeting. You're not able to change where your focus is, it's driven by where the camera is. So I spent a lot of time listening and I participated through subcommittees. I was on the Curriculum Subcommittee, which meets less frequently, Budget and Finance Subcommittee, which meets a lot, especially in budget timeframe, and the Policy Subcommittee, where I work with Lawrence, another representative from Chelmsford, as a part of a group that's going through a whole policy review at this point with MASC. So that's become a very good and active committee, and I'd like to continue doing all of that. So that's why I asked to be reappointed, and I appreciate letting you know what it's been like the last couple of years and hope that you feel that Chelmsford is well represented over there. I also just want to mention that Don Air, I know he is up for reappointment, and he had a nice recognition by Mass Association of School Committees recently for his 40 years as a school member. And he just recently had a medical procedure, so otherwise I'm sure he'd be here tonight. So I know he's ready and willing and able to continue.
Thank you. We will now take a vote. I will poll the Select Board first and then the school committee. Select person Wojcisz.
All clear.
Selectman LeFevre.
I'll vote for Claire.
Selectman Coroda.
I'll vote for Claire.
Selectman Dixon.
Clear.
Madam Chairperson.
I'll vote for Claire.
School committee member, Chairman, Mr. King.
Clear.
Mr. Doherty.
Clear.
Ms. Santos.
Clear.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will now.
There's a hat fight. Enough hat. You deserve it.
We will now go to the regular school committee position that's available. You do have, I believe, the two applications, and I will entertain motions for.
My name is along with what Claire said to everyone.
You need to come to the mic.
Congratulations, Claire. An excellent choice. Piggybacking on what Claire said, we had a Noshova School Committee meeting on Tuesday, and even though Mr. Air is recovering from a medical procedure and can hardly speak, he's having a little trouble speaking, he did join us for the budget presentation via Zoom for a few moments, and I'm just saying, this is the commitment that this man has. And I know if he could have been wheeled into the meeting tonight, he would have been here. So please don't hold his not being present against him, and he's been a great member of the school committee. That's all.
I wish we had the nomination first, but that would, that's fine.
I assume that he was.
He's a stickler.
Okay, I'll entertain nominations.
Don Air.
Do I have a second for Mr. Air?
Second.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Brian Strip.
Mr. Strip, any others, seconds for that?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Okay, I will poll, since neither, neither candidate's here, I'll just start polling the, and I'll go with the Select Board first again. Select person Wojcisz.
Don Air.
Selectman LeFevre.
Don Air.
Mr. Selectman Coroda.
Don Air.
Selectman Dixon.
Don Air.
Madam Chairperson.
Don Air.
School committee member Santos.
Mr. Air.
Mr. Doherty.
Don Air.
And Chairman.
Don Air.
Well, it's unanimous. That being the case, congratulations to Mr. Air. I hope Mr. Strip will continue to show interest in the community and decide to run again for another position. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our public, our public service announcements. And first up, Ken, we have the proclamation.
Want to read it?
I do. Do we have anyone, Latasha, are you here to receive it?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have a proclamation from the Town of Chelmsford, land acknowledgement. Whereas the Town of Chelmsford acknowledges that its lands upon which the government buildings, town common libraries are situated, is the traditional ancestral territory of many diverse indigenous nations, and we strive to honor these people. And whereas the Town of Chelmsford acknowledges the painful history of genocide that forced removal from this land now known as Chelmsford, and we honor the indigenous people still connected to this land on which we live, work, and learn. And whereas this area comprises in part the homelands of the Pawtucket, Pennacook, Abenaki, and their close neighbors, the Massachussetts and Ni'up, Ni'up peoples, and whereas the, did I say that right?
Yep.
Okay. And whereas the Town of Chelmsford extends our deepest respect to citizens of those nations who live here and elsewhere today, and their ancestors who have lived here for generations, therefore be it resolved, the Town of Chelmsford formally recognizes, expresses appreciation for, and honors the indigenous people who have an historic relationship with the lands of the town. And further, the Town Chelmsford Select Board respectfully recommends positive action in the proclamations by residents, local businesses, educators, community, and faith-based organizations, town employees, town boards, and town committees. Signed this day, the 14th day of March 2022, by Tris Juris, the Town Clerk, and the Select Board.
Thank you, Select Board, for signing the proclamation. We will do our best to share this information with all the different community groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Latasha. Okay. Next up, Ken.
Next, public service announcement, just to remind everyone, local election is Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Every vote counts. The polls are open, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The deadline to register a vote is March 16th, Wednesday, at 8:00 p.m. So we had an adjustment to the polling locations in the precincts. We've added some precincts here, too. So if you're not sure where you live, go to the Town Clerk's, I mean, not sure where your precinct is. Go to the Town Clerk's website, yeah, go to the Town Clerk's website, look up where you live, and you'll see the new precincts. So again, just check the precinct map for your street and, and show up to vote.
Thank you. And we have the Minutemen.
Yep, last one. I was told I was supposed to be wearing my Tricon hat for this, but I left it at home. So the Chelmsford Minuteman Company invites the general public to join us in our 11th Annual Patriots' Day March from Chelmsford to Concord. Join the Chelmsford Minutemen, Boys and Girl Scouts, and fellow citizens in reliving the fateful day on April 19th, 1775, that thrust the colonies into the start of the American Revolution. The Chelmsford Almum will be in full outfit, complete with muskets and accoutrements outfitted like our town sires were in 1775. Scouts will receive the rare Chelmsford Trail to Concord Patch. We will be mustering on the town common at 3:30 on Patriots' Day, Monday, the 18th. We will step off the curve at 4:00 a.m., where we'll start our walk from Chelmsford Common. We'll be stopping in Carlisle and then continuing on to the Old North Bridge and Concord. Our arrival time there should be around 9:00 a.m. If you're interested, you know, please come to the common on the 18th, and you can reach out to jcurley12@comcast.net for more information, or our captain, sixmiddlesex@gmail.com for more information.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Okay, I'm not seeing any here in the Zoom room, so we'll move on to committee vacancies.
So for the week of March 14th, 2022, we have the following vacancies available. Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee, one three-year term. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. The CCA Advisory Committee is looking to fill two seats, one-year terms. Commissions on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term. Community Action Program Committee has two one-year terms. Council on Aging has one unexpired three-year term, one three-year term, and five associate member positions. Those are staggered, three years, ending each June 30th, 2022, 23, 24. Cultural Council is looking to fill two seats, three-year terms. Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, we have one unexpired three-year term. Historic Commission, one unexpired three-year term. Holiday Decorating Committee, they're looking for two one-year terms. Parade Committee, looking for all applicants will be welcome to a one-year term that expires each July 31st. Public Celebrations Committee has five one-year terms. Recycling Committee is looking to fill one one-year term. And the Training Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. If you're interested in serving on any town boards or committees, please complete an online application at the town website, or if you have any questions or want more information, you can reach out to the Town Manager's Office here at 50 Billerica Road, or you can email tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov, or call the office at 978-250-5202.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have the Common Vigilar Licenses, a set of three for Dunkin' Donuts, and I see someone here in the Zoom room. Your screen just says Dunkin' Donuts. We're going to need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Emily Fitzgerald, 280 Mariborach, Stroudy, Methuwa, Mass.
Thank you. Do you want to explain to the board what we're doing?
Sure. So we recently took over the ownership of four of the Dunkin' Donuts in Chelmsford, and I am hoping to transfer the common vics on three of them and terminate one of them because that one has no ceiling.
Okay. Any questions? No? So we should probably do these one at a time, right, the motions?
Probably get them, I can get them through in all one swath.
All right, whatever.
So I'll make a motion to transfer the Common Vigilar License at 18 Boston Road, 105 Chelmsford Street, and 80 Drum Hill to GL Donuts, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, and terminate the 81 Tingsborough Road Vigilar License currently issued to Pawtucket Donut Corp.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Good luck. You're all set. Thank you. Okay, next we have the LGBTQ Listening Session Path Forward. So Latasha's here from the Diversity Committee. They did meet and discuss it, and they would like the Select Board to host the meeting with support from the DEIC. They are suggesting that we host the Listening Session sometime between April 11th and May 16th in advance of Pride Month. So my first question is, does the board agree to host this Listening Session? Everybody okay with that? Okay. In terms of the dates, I don't know if you have any thoughts, but looking at April, every week we're booked with something, either a board meeting, town meeting, strategic planning. So, so my thought was maybe it would be better to do this in May, early May, the week of May's, when are the board meetings in May, Paul?
The 2nd, the 16th, and the, the 2nd and 16th.
2nd and 16th. So like, the week of the 9th would be open if we wanted to do it on a Monday, or we could pick another day.
Do we think we're going to get through town meeting in two nights?
Yes. That's my assumption.
Okay. I'm sorry, Pat, what was your question?
That's assuming, we assume town meeting completed in two sessions.
Right, that's assuming town meeting down in two nights, yeah.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we, we would not be meeting on a, on a second. We'd be in town meeting again.
So I just wanted to give some feedback to the DEIC. I know sometimes when we put extra things in, we try to do them on a Monday because we have Mondays kind of programmed in our calendars anyway. So one potential option would be Monday, May 9th, or we could pick a different day of the week in early May.
So would this be a listening, a Listening Session like the others that we've had, we would have, we'd have it, would we have it, where would we have it?
I, I think, you can speak, Latasha. My, my thought was, yes, it's similar to every other type of Listening Session we've had, where we're gathering to listen, and that maybe we, Paul, I don't know if you've thought about this, but maybe we have it at the senior center or somewhere that's easy for people to get to. We could have it here. I just don't know if this room will accommodate. I don't know how many people will show up. So I don't want people to have to sit in two rooms.
And I also think we need to have a virtual option for people to call in.
Yeah.
Well, that might make it more difficult.
If you want it live, then your best option is probably McCarthy Auditorium.
Yeah. And there's, we could do it virtually there, too. So, so what, any thoughts about date?
The 9th is fine for me.
You want to shoot, you want to shoot for the 9th?
Yeah, it's fine.
So, Latasha, could you just maybe feed that back to your committee? If that doesn't work, we have time to pick another date, but right now, we'll shoot for that.
Is this for Chelmsford residents only, or is this for wide open?
George, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Is this for Chelmsford residents only, or is this for, is this open to?
I would assume it'd be Chelmsford residents only.
Right.
Yeah, it's usually a Listening Session for the community.
We've had out-of-towners at our traffic Listening Sessions.
Have we? Okay.
I mean, I don't see why we would restrict it to Chelmsford residents. I wouldn't expect many to come.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, some things will, yeah. We have.
Okay.
And those details can be discussed and worked out as we planned this.
Yeah.
Okay. But it looks like May 9th is the preferred date at this time.
And I'll check the availability, I'll check the availability of McCarthy Auditorium.
Yeah, that's another challenge, is the space. So we'll, we'll look into the 9th, and if that doesn't work, we'll propose a different date.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Latasha. Okay. Next up, we have the ambulance contract renewal.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have on the call Police Chief James Spinney and Fire Chief Gary Ryan, and in the audience, we have John Chemley and, Chris Dick.
Chris Dick.
I knew, it was on the tip of my tongue, but I didn't want to say it and say a different name, you know, correctly so, from, from Pride Star Trinity EMS. Our existing ambulance agreement expires at the end of the fiscal year, and traditionally, this is the time we bring it in for renewal. In the past, we've done three-year agreements with two one-year renewals. I think the only thing that's different right now is, is there has been a transition with Trinity and Pride Star, and maybe John, or Chris could come up, or, or even David, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't even.
Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry. Sorry, Brian. Or Brian, if you want, both of you want to come up and sort of explain the transition?
You guys decide who's coming up.
Exactly. All right, Brian.
We just need your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and the board. John Chemley, 2 Douglas Road, former CEO and President of Trinity EMS, now Senior Vice President of Corporate Strategies for Pride Star EMS. This is another Senior Vice President. This is Brian Chanley, also with Pride Star.
160 Butman Road, Lowell, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Yes, December 20th, Trinity was acquired by Pride Star EMS, and the entire management teams of Trinity was maintained and kept by Pride Star, which was fortunate for all of us, including the Town of Chelmsford, because the continuity of service and the continuity of experience and wisdom of 25 years' worth of 911 here in Chelmsford was maintained. So we are asking that our contract be renewed for the next three years, and if you wish, also two one-year extensions like the last one. But Brian, if you want to say a couple of words?
Sure. You know, we've now been involved in this acquisition now for, going on about 90 days, and our goal is to continue the relationships that we've had, the continuity of care within the communities, build and develop on the relationships that have already been made, and basically continue as the system has been running for the previous years that Trinity has been involved here. So we're extremely excited to be here and be part of the community. We look forward to grow and develop the relationship and continue to provide the high level of clinical care and the community involvement that Trinity has provided for those years that they've been involved in this community.
And I would think that anything with the combined resources of the two companies, they can provide more resources than even traditionally has been provided in the past.
Yes, we, we now have, I don't know, close to 100 vehicles now, and we're spread out really all over the 495 corridor. As you know, we have, I think, eight or 10 bases now between everything that we have. But here in Chelmsford, we're right in 19 North Road, I believe, right, right downtown, behind Metro Finance Services, and it's worked out really great for us. So, but yeah, we have added resources, added staff, because staff is really tough right now. But we were able to merge our two companies together, and it's worked out really well.
All right. We also have two locations right over the line, one on Westwood Street, and the Pride Star EMS headquarters is on 229 Stedman Street. So we have a, a large amount of resources that are in the close vicinity of Chelmsford, and, you know, these types of resources. During this time, as, as John said, where people are struggling for staff, we feel we're in a very strong position right now to continue to grow and, and provide development to our staff and, and move them along, and we do EMT classes, and so we're, we feel we're in a strong place to continue to bring quality EMS professionals into the community and continue to provide great service.
And just so the board and the public's aware, because ambulance services are covered and funded partially by Medicare, Medicaid fundings, federal fundings, communities are prohibited from bidding the service because, but the arrangement we have had is that we apportion our share of dispatch services for medical to the provider, and that's how the town gets compensated. And in your packet, you have the correspondence from Chief Spinney, as well as the calculation of roughly 10% of the dispatch calls. So roughly, the town receives about $80,000 per year for, you know, for this service, and, you know, and again, that represents the work that's provided through dispatch for the calls. 911 calls obviously come in through our system, they're dispatched, you know, to Trinity, and they coordinate with our emergency fire and police response.
Any questions?
So, so Paul, is this recalculated every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's done annually, yep.
And go up.
And they basically reimburse us monthly, is how it works.
We don't, we don't have public on this one. Is it critical, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that wasn't the time. I would have done it during public. I'm here in support of.
Okay. Thank you.
Very much so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The last contract was, it was three years with two single?
Yep, two one-year options.
And our option?
Yep, yep, exactly.
There's no other questions? I'll take a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the Pride Star contract as a three-year contract with two one-year options.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, 5-0. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service for us.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, next up, we have the Order of Taking for Ledge Road.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is a follow-up item from the February special town meeting. This is the formal order of taking for the easement that the town was authorized, the Select Board was authorized at the special town meeting for Esther Drive, which is off of Ledge Way for the bus turnaround. The document has been prepared by Town Council's Office and the attorney for the property owner. So we'd ask your vote this evening to approve and execute the order of taking. And then we hope, if the weather continues to improve, to get out there as quick as we can to put the pavement down to get the bus on the roadway.
Are there any questions for council?
I just noticed a, a small typo on page three, number five.
Yep.
The town shall be obligated, looks like a.
T2?
Yeah.
So it's an extra T, okay.
Bittering T.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll delete that.
Someone was nervous when they were writing it.
They had to leave something there to test you, Pat.
I'm always nervous when she doesn't find something.
You want a motion?
I will, sure.
I will make a motion to approve the order of taking for the expanded Esther to improve and expand on Esther Drive.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Thank you. Next, I have, just have a brief report this evening, just two items. The first one is, is since our last meeting on March 2nd, we received the anticipated Chapter 90 notification from the Governor's Office that pending final passage of the bond authorization by the state legislature, the town would receive 1.158 million of Chapter 90 funds for the upcoming fiscal year. That's the same amount of the 200 million statewide amount that's, that's been in effect for the last decade. So we hope that this is the minimum that comes out of the legislative, legislative process. The Governor had submitted $100 million additional Chapter 90 in the supplemental budget. That did not make it through the House last week, so we'll perhaps hoping, and I know the Municipal Association's doing some lobbying, that perhaps additional Chapter 90 funds will come. So at the end of the day, we get the extra 100 in some manner of. So at the end of the day, we get the extra 100 in some manner or form, either it's the annual authorization or perhaps a special budget. So I just wanted to let the community know, you know, that's where we are with Chapter 90 funding at this time.
How did the locals, the local reps vote on that supplemental budget?
Yeah, it was unanimous. The Democrats all voted in favor, and all the Republicans, but one voted against it. And when I spoke to Representative Golden, who might now be a little more interested in with Chapter 90 funding, perhaps, he said, well, he thought it would come up perhaps in the authorization rather than the supplemental budget. And I kind of explained to him, well, that's going to delay us a little bit because we don't know when you're going to finish the annual authorization. In some years, it hasn't been done until June or July. But that's where it stands. But yeah, it, it's part of the mystery of how the state legislature works with the governor. So that's where we are in Chapter 90 funding. And then the only other I have is, I did report our sewer flows for the month of February, which closed out since our last meeting. February flows were below the previous two Februaries. And so for the first three months of this year, the flows have been less than the prior two years, even though for the fall, it was the opposite. But at this point in time, the million gallon per day flow for the fiscal year to date is 2.60, which is below our permitted limit of 2.66 million gallons per day. So again, we'll keep monitoring that. And then the other thing I want to, while I'm leaving the subject, is this coming Tuesday morning, we're having a, which is a week from today, we're having a kickoff meeting for the work that's going to do the exploratory infiltration and inflow, cammering and investigation in the sewer project. So now that the weather conditions are allowing, that work is scheduled to take off. So we're, you know, so that's good news. That'll give us a better sense on what may be achievable and also what it may cost within our own system in that first phase.
Paul, when did you say that meeting was?
That is coming up next week.
Okay.
I believe it's, is it Monday or Tuesday, Gary? Okay, next Monday. Monday, the 21st, at 10:00 AM. We're down at, 9:00 AM, we're down at DPW for that meeting and kick things off. And then, and at the same time, while we're on meetings, also, if you've been by 54 Richardson Road, the work is beginning there on the installation of the PFAS treatment system as well. So again, we're finally getting some weather to work, and we're making some progress out there.
And when did you say they're going to take measurements on Richardson Road?
Oh, they already took the measurements. He didn't think we'd have the results of that for a couple more weeks.
Okay.
For the latest PFAS sampling. So that's my report this evening. I do have one appointment, actually, you have one appointment. I have reporting to you that you have three candidates to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee before you this evening.
So the applicants are, and I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing these correctly, Jordan Vashon, Eric Titara, and who was the third?
Mark Fitzhanso.
Thank you, Mark Fitzhanso. And I do see Eric in the Zoom room. If, I'm not sure if you would like to say anything, but you're welcome to at this time.
Hi, yeah. I do have, I am a passionate guy about climate change. I'm hoping you can hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I, if I had a minute or two, I could talk about myself. I had some pictures, and then maybe I sent them along, and maybe people have seen them already.
We do have your information in our packet, so we've seen that.
Okay. Okay, so I won't, I'm not sure exactly how you saw it. But I'll just say, I am passionate about climate issues, especially nervous about desertifying the planet, desertification. Historically, the approach used is to try to eliminate or reduce fossil fuel emissions. And, but is a worrisome approach to me, as unfortunately not effective to the largest issues of planet cooling. And my passion is with this regenerative agriculture approach, where soils are restored by capturing water and carbon, and true cooling can take place, and other benefits of biodiversity and healthy foods. And with sustainability in its name, this committee is a great opportunity to promote regenerative agriculture, if you agree.
Okay.
Locally, we have many experts and, and people who practice regenerative agriculture, Chelmsford area and regionally in Massachusetts and the US. I have a big fan of all those and would aim to promote them. If you think this is a good idea, I think I'd be willing to help with this approach on this committee. Thank you. Eric Titara, 8 Tanglewood Drive.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? Do you want me to just go around and take your recommendations?
Yeah, just do me second to last.
That's not fair.
You want to start, Pat, or?
Sure, I can start. You know, I appreciate the three applicants who put their name forward again for this. I've attended some of the meetings of the, this committee, and I speak probably monthly with the, with the chair. I think they're doing a good job, and I think the group there is, they work well together. I know that the person who is leaving is, I think, I believe she served as the clerk of the committee and had a good background in this area. So I guess my preference would be to replace her with somebody of like characteristics. So that would be Jordan Vashon.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I'm really glad that everybody put their applications back in. And when I took a look at everything, I thought Jordan Vashon also would be a good choice to join that team, you know, for that committee. So I'd put that name forward.
George?
I agree with that selection. I looked over the resumes, and, I mean, they're all good.
Yep.
Just, somebody has to hear it, so.
And Ken?
I just, you know, reiterate, I'm just impressed with, when we first set up this committee, how many people that were of great quality applied for this. And still, to have three more applicants with one open seat just makes this so tough. But I'm going to support Jordan.
And I was actually also leaning towards Jordan. When we had to, did the first round, she was my next runner-up. And I think that, to Pat's point, she's a good replacement for the person that's exiting the committee. I would also just say to Eric, I think, too, we have an agricultural commission. I don't know if they would be interested in learning about some of your ideas, but you may want to attend one of their meetings as well. And I thank all the applicants. It's really great that we have more applicants than positions. I wish we could see that more often.
I'm going to, again, to Eric, you know, I spend a little bit of time out at Sunny Meadows and talking to some of the people in town who tried to do the farming here.
Yeah.
I think they really could benefit. And what he sent over was very educational. I think they really could benefit from, you know, your knowledge that you have. So I hope you were to reach out to them and become active.
And if you, if you need help connecting with the right, that community, Eric, if you'd like to do that, just let us know. We, you know, either the town manager's office or one of the board members can help make that connection for you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do we need to vote? We need to vote. Let's take a.
Do you need a motion or just a vote?
I don't think there's a motion on the floor.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve Jordan Vashon to the Clean Energy Committee.
I'll second the motion.
Give a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Town Common Improvements Discussion. So up on the screen, I have a, this is one of the goals that we set last August or September when we finalized our goals. And we had said that we had other priorities, so we were going to look at doing something with this goal in the fourth quarter. So since that starts next month, I just wanted to talk to the board a little bit about how you wanted to handle this. And I think what we had said was that it's nothing where we're probably going to get a definitive path forward this year, but maybe we could get some input from various stakeholders and do some type of listening session. Any thoughts?
I did get a call from a member of the Historic District Commission that obviously wants to be involved with any discussions. So I, you know, I would put that out there. I didn't know if our thought was going to be to, you know, set up a committee to talk about this, or if we're just going to, you know, if we will try to, you know, get something done via the listening sessions and departments across the town. I guess maybe that's a decision to be made after that time.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, that's open for discussion. I think when I said how measured in this column about the listening session, I think my recollection is what we had said was it's a suggestion we wanted to follow through on, but we weren't sure in what manner to follow through. So we were going to just start with a listening session and get people's inputs. And if the board thinks it makes sense, more sense to start with a committee, that's fine. I think part of what we were wrestling with was, was there enough here to have a committee? Or is it something?
Well, we had a committee once for the, you know, the Public Garden on North Road, and that's a quarter acre.
Yeah.
So I mean.
And any other thoughts about this?
That was brand new, that was brand new at the time, and, right?
You're right, yeah, it was.
There were so many ideas that were on the table for this, like from the common up to Route 4. So I think that's where we landed on the listening session, but go ahead, Ken.
I'm just, I'm torn because we finally have movement going on in the center with Oddfellows House. And, you know, now you get the piece of land next to the library for sale. I kind of, you know, I don't know, someone posted somewhere, I don't know if it was on one of the social media, going through the center and pointing out, you know, if you, if you got the Oddfellows fixed up and looking nice, and Fisk House sold, and the fence got fixed, and then something happens with that house next to the library, like it could be a whole center beautification along with the common. But I don't want to bite off too much and task a committee. Or part of me thinks, well, that's all Historic District. Well, mostly, that's Historic District. And you could make it a subcommittee of Historic District that works with us, or, I don't know. I don't know how to design it, but I just think there's a lot of exciting stuff going on in the center. To limit it to the common is fine, but I just think we're missing a bigger picture.
I don't know that we limited it to the common.
Yeah, I think I always wanted.
That was the starting point.
No, what I'm saying is too limited to the common, we'd be missing the big picture.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I'll even mention, I agree with Ken, but also then you have Nine Acton Road, and you also have the change in ownership across the street from Oddfellows. So there's a lot of things changing there. And I think it's really important that we, you know, get a sense of what we've got here with Fisk House being.
Five years from now, it could be a different center.
Yeah, and you really want to, I think you want to design into what we're, we're creating there. And then with that property next to the, next to the library and so forth, that's kind of a centerpiece. So, you know, that's still kind of up for grabs, so. I'm not so sure that I would, you know, steam forward too hard with this situation right now until some of those things get a little bit more solidified and clear.
You also have the Historic District Commission having a special subcommittee working on the preservation restriction for the Fisk House. So it's all moving real fast, so.
And I know, I had heard from the Center Village Committee at one point, well, not from the committee, but from someone on it at one point, that, you know, if we had a listening session, they would be happy to participate because they have a lot of ideas, but they have no structure or funding in which to implement them, so.
But instead of sitting back and seeing what comes forward with these projects, I think if the committee was in place with some idea of what they want it to look like to give direction to the developers over facades and things, I think that would actually be a better outcome, in my opinion.
Yeah, as long as they didn't, you know, conundract anything that the Center Village Master Plan Committee.
Well, that's why I said.
They'd be part of the stakeholders that we invite to this first meeting to decide what we want to do.
Having them as a subcommittee under them and in joint with.
Or is it a subcommittee that has members from different committees on it with a couple of residents at large, right?
Because I know with Oddfellows, they picked out the siding and the color of the shingles and the look of the wind, you know what I mean? And that's the kind of the facade direction you want to give a developer.
Although some of that stuff is under the purview of the Historic District.
Of the Center Village, right. Yeah, that's what I think.
Historic District.
And I just want to remind you, this wasn't, this was never about, this was never about the buildings. This was, when Pat first brought up the idea, it was when we have an event on the Town Common, nobody can hear what's going on on the stage.
Right.
Right? And then we started thinking about the Brookwalk and, you know, other aspects that aren't covered necessarily by an existing committee or commission. I think that was what this was more about.
Right, my concern was the appearance, you know, the tree line and so forth, the appearance as you come in from the 495 Bridge into the center. You know, and, you know, the only parallel I can think of is what we've just seen happen in Vinyl Square, with the improvement committee there and the highway redesign and what's going on at Varney and so forth. And they've sort of been the umbrella organization for North Chelmsford Vinyl Square. I mean, do we do the parallel with the Center Village Committee and ask them to sort of ship, you know, be the umbrella type of organization for this? You know, because I just think, yeah, I'm just, that parallel, you know, runs through my mind when sort of what we've just, you know, what's been happening across town.
And this is something that I don't anticipate being done in a year or two. I mean, there's going to be things that are going to take much longer than that to work out, I think.
Does it still make sense for the board to, along the board's initial thinking here, does it still make sense for the board to host some type of just listening session with the relevant committees and commission and invite the public and see what comes of that?
Yeah.
I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how to make a decision on who should be in charge without having that conversation.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the committees that are existing.
And that would include Historic District?
Historic Center Village, yeah.
Center Village? And then, and anybody from the public who wants to weigh in?
Economic Development, is that, are they, are they being an important piece?
Well, I mean, obviously, they can attend.
Yeah, Tree Committee.
I think they can come if they want.
By the way.
Yeah, there's some people that have commented, they'd like to see more trees on the common.
Right. I think if, at least in that area, too, as to Paul's comment about, you know, that you come off 45, I think with the right setup of trees, it would give you a nice corner, kind of tunneling look down that road. And we have either open space in properties that are, you know, whether it's the CCA, but you also have St. Mary's and Metro, I mean, those are all just wide open. That if they, maybe if they got donated trees, they'd be willing to throw them up to give us that maple look or whatever look you're looking for to set up the main street.
So, go ahead.
Do you want to take up your, oh, you're opening Monday in May?
Well, that was my next question. Do you want to? Do we want to be doing this late May or early June? It seems like that's when the calendar can accommodate it.
Once we get past town meeting.
I mean, it's not, I don't think it's an emergency.
No, but we just said we wanted to have this initial meeting sometime before the fourth quarter ends.
I think the choices are by, given yours, the select board schedule in May, which would be the 2nd and the 16th, and then you're looking at the 9th for the other session, the 30th is Memorial Day, so the only remaining Monday in May would be the 23rd. And then June, you'd meet the 6th and the 20th, no, the 27th, because Juneteenth is a holiday on the 20th of June this year. So it seems like if you wanted to stick with your Monday convention, it'd be either Monday, May 23rd, or Monday, June 13th.
You might get a different approach in nice weather when you see a lot of things come to bloom. And, you know, I mean, you might be able to mix and match things up. Like your idea, Ken, of putting pretty trees in certain areas and things like that.
Just from a scheduling standpoint, I think June 13th sounds better to me.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Maybe we could have that at the CCA.
I was just going to suggest that. Have it in the center somewhere.
Okay. All right, so.
We could have it on the common, use our speaker system.
There you go.
See how much it works, how well.
I'll get a notice out to the Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Tree Committee, Center Village Master Plan Committee, and then just in general to the June 13th.
Send it to the chairs of whatever committees.
Yeah.
If we do it at the CCA, can Chelmsford Telemedia accommodate that, recording it?
I think if they know well enough in advance, yeah. I think if they know well enough in advance, yeah.
Yeah, they've done meetings for me before.
Yeah. Okay.
Next up, we have the, Mike K. One, is that Mike from the planning board in the Zoom room?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I don't, I don't see, do you know if anyone is coming for Charles Way? Other?
No, I don't believe any, no.
Mike, are you here for Charles Way?
Well, I'm here to listen and answer any questions, not that I'm deeply involved in...
No, I just saw your name on the correspondence. The only reason I'm asking is if we, if that's what Mike's here for, if we want to take that one out of order before we get to the minutes process.
I mean, how long is...
All right, let's do the minutes process then, fine.
Okay.
Hang tight, Mike.
Okay, anybody have any, oh, go ahead.
No, I just want to say, this is something that Mark Carrad has been working on with Attorney Haverty, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
And these got distributed to everybody. I trust people had a chance to take a look at them. I was considering not reading them complete, but if everyone would like me to, I will. Any suggestions on that, or?
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't either, but, you know. So how would you like me to go through it? Do you want to just go through comments or questions with the, with the board?
Well, at the top level, you created two documents. One is for the Select Board Minutes process, and one is an overall policy.
Right. Overall policy for meeting notices, agendas, and minutes for all public bodies. Then the other one is specific to the Select Board, which gives us a little bit more detailed guidance and methodology for how to move executive session minutes and so forth through the process, and also audit them.
So why don't we go one at a time? Let's start with the Select Board Minutes. Are there any questions or comments?
I have one. On the, actually, we've got to get pages on here, and actually, I need to get a name in whatever the date is that we end up voting on this. I'll just put down as a release date. I don't know if there is a naming convention and so forth, but those are minor things. But on the, let's see, on the third page in, down under the audit of held minutes process, about the sixth line down or so, it says exemptions under public laws, the subject matter in minutes shall be reviewed by town council. That should say, should be reviewed by town council. And that makes it consistent with the other policy document that we have in front of us, as they both mention the exact same requirements, and they both should say should.
So in the next sentence, does that say shall or should?
Council, as to whether the minutes should be, continue to be held, that one?
Such review shall be documented and should not be reasonably delayed.
Nope.
I think that is a shall.
That should be shall.
Any other questions or comments?
So now, how would, this would be part of our policies, or this would be just a procedure that we follow?
It's more of a procedure.
Okay. I mean, it seems to be pretty straightforward and pretty much the way it should be done, just...
Right. And, you know, again, this will be a basis so that once it starts being used, you know, people can make modifications, improvements, you know, other things, and if the law changes, open meeting law or interpretations of it, we can make adjustments there. But at least we have a document that we're living by, and something that we can use to, again, improve, adjust, modify as the years go by. I think that's really for both documents.
Pat, do you think there should be a policy statement that just says the board will maintain a process, an updated process for minutes approval or anything like that, just so that it's codified, or?
You know, that's what I was asking, if, you know, the intent was to put it in the policies book.
I don't, that's what I wasn't sure.
Right, I mean, I don't really think that it's, I don't think it's necessary, but we could do that.
I mean, it came about because there was nothing documented, so we were...
There was nothing documented, then we made some changes to the convention that we were following as well, so. That was probably the most important, you know, changes that we made, and then we realized we should probably codify that in the document. So, you know, my real question is naming, where to put it. I haven't done any of these types of documents before in this setting.
But to, I mean, to the point Pat brought up, if it's not, if it's not referenced or in an appendix in the policy document, then you run the risk that it just gets forgotten and doesn't maintain, keep being updated.
So how would you do that, a section within that, or a reference?
We could do it with, I guess with a reference, but, I mean, I don't know how frequently something like this would change, if like, you know, different people on the board wanted to, you know, change, you know, most of it, like you said, is kind of covered by open meeting law anyway, and other regulations. So there's, there almost is, I don't know, probably little that could be, that could be changed, depending on...
Well, I mean, there's an option, I defer to Paul Haverty and Mark, but my understanding is there was an option of how we could approach the final approval and wrap up and tying the bow around what had been approved for executive session minutes. There's a couple of ways to handle that under open meeting law, and so we chose a path.
Right, exactly.
So that...
And the path that was chosen was intended to be the path that really had the least amount of red tape associated with it. It required less times of actually for the Select Board to come and meet, and discuss the minutes, and try to short circuit that endless loop of executive session approval of minutes, executive session approval of minutes, over and over.
Right, I also feel that it does that. It unburdens the board to some extent with going through all these iterations, and, but I think the most important thing in my mind was how we, within the open meeting law, there are several ways you can deal with things, several ways that you could deal with minutes approval, where they are approved, and how they are communicated to the public. And we've nailed down what we think is the most prudent pathway to do that here, and it's important that we do nail that down, so we do have a policy document that states how we're going to do that in the future. Because, again, there is a lot of leeway on how you would do that, and that was one of the areas I think we had our most vulnerability in.
I think with, especially with the way you just phrased it, Mark, it seems like it would make sense to have a policy section updated in the policy document on minutes. And maybe there's two subsections. One says the board will maintain, you know, their procedure and policy in compliance with open meeting law, and here it is, or reference it as an appendix in the policy document. And the second section, depending where we go in your second document, may be the policy that's instituted, giving guidance to all boards and committees, and that we will maintain that. Because we run the danger of this one, too, if it just becomes a policy and there's nowhere where it's subject to some type of periodic review, then that we're going to forget about it, and it may not be kept current. Those are my thoughts.
I mean, I guess I would say as far as the Select Board Minutes, if, you know, we could, we could put that in the policies, that's, that's fine. On the other one, that almost looks like something that the clerk should be manager of, since the clerk is the one that...
Minutes.
That does the minutes for the, for the other boards and committees. I don't think we should be in the business of enforcing the procedures for minutes on another board. But I think it's, I think it's a good one, and I think, I don't know if you talked to the town clerk about it at all, but I would think that would be something that, like I said, they would enforce on the other boards and have continued follow-up. I mean, I think that's where there's the lacking, you know, it's, the clerk waits for the boards to submit things, but doesn't really follow up if they're six months late or however, whatever. I think that's more of their...
Is it really, though, the clerk? I thought it was the appointing authority that was really responsible for that.
Well, but that gets to whether you have boards that are elected, such as the planning board, Board of Health. You don't have appointing authority over those boards.
Exactly.
So I do think that Select Board Justice's suggestion that it be held by the town clerk is actually a good one.
But this has both. This covers both types, so.
But I think if the town clerk is holding this document and overseeing it, it will cover both the elected and the appointed boards.
Okay, oh, no, it's fine then. I just didn't know. The way I looked at it is, will the town clerk be overseeing the appointed boards, especially the ones that don't meet often, to make sure that they're getting their minutes done?
Well, I think that would be the goal, and I think if, again, if it's a board appointed by the Select Board, you still have oversight over it.
Mm-hmm.
And you certainly, you know, would be able to take whatever steps are necessary to ensure that this policy is being followed. I don't think that you would be hindered in doing that simply because it's being held in the town clerk's office.
I think, too, one of the reasons, my recollection is why we went forward with this one, the town clerk one, if you will, was when someone's elected or appointed, we get information about open meeting law and things like that, but there was never anything in one place that said, you know, here's kind of what your requirement is when you, when you run a meeting in terms of posting agendas, when minutes have to be in. You kind of learn it as you go, or you learn it from other board members. So this was almost meant to be...
Educational.
What I'd like it, what I'd like to see it become is not something that the town clerk's office has to chase down, but something that they can provide, and, you know, kind of the expectations are clear from the outset, and the committees own it and do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, that was more my point. I just didn't know, I didn't want to put something on the town clerk to be chasing down the non-elected boards, especially the ones that don't meet frequently, to...
Well, and that's a good, that's a good point, Mark, because like, some of those boards, as Paul said, some of them are appointed by us.
Right.
So maybe it's incumbent upon us. Some of them are appointed by Paul. Maybe he needs to kind of, this was a document that would help him remind the boards he appoints, and then the elected boards, maybe the town clerk has to take that one on.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
I'm thinking out loud.
I mean, I, I'm sorry, I think that, you know, you could do it that way. It makes it a little bit more confusing, slicing it up into three different pieces.
Yeah, I agree.
But I would say, again, for the boards that you appoint, for the boards that the town manager appoints, you're not giving away any authority over those boards by having this rest in the town clerk's office.
Right.
It's just sort of having a central location to where this policy will be, to ensure that these board and committee members actually receive copies of the policy.
Yeah.
And then, you know, it goes on from there.
I think it should go to the town clerk, because, I mean, she has said to us, she's the keeper.
My comment wasn't taken away, my comment was, we can support that.
Absolutely.
If she's, if the town clerk's office is having trouble, right, well, then I think whoever appointed the board or the committee should help with that.
Okay.
That's, that was my point.
Right, because remember, one of the main issues is that there were a lot of gaps where there were no minutes. So, you know, this policy, you know, it's new and it has some details in there and so forth, but the requirement wasn't being looked after anywhere before, and I'm not sure this policy says how it's going to be looked after.
Maybe we should meet with the clerk and see if maybe we could work something into here, where the clerk on a six-month basis or whatever does a review to see who is way behind, and then notifies the appointing authority to then follow up, or something like that, or, you know, the first time, a warning to the committee itself, you need to get caught up, and then a second time, report to the appointing authority, so there's a little bit more leverage to get things done.
I'm okay, as long as, you know, the clerk's good with doing that. I'm fine with it.
Because in terms of, certainly with applicability to open meeting law, you know, requests, public records requests, it's going to come back on the town clerk, right? So if somebody submits a public records request and they haven't done these minutes, you know, the town clerk is going to wind up getting involved in that anyway. So I think it is appropriate for this to be part of, you know, their oversight.
I'm fine with that. But it's not in here.
I understand.
You know, so it needs to go in here, if we're going to do that, and then again, I don't control the responsibilities of the clerk, so I want to make sure that that's okay, too.
Right, I understand, but I, you know, I just think it, I don't know how, I don't think we should be responsible for doing all of that enforcement.
Oh, Pat, I don't either. I don't want to do that. I'm just, again, there's a lot of different pieces within this, that one piece sounds like it should be with the clerk, but the other ones are the ones that were fallen down, and that's what I...
Can you give an example, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, if you go back and you look at all the appointed, an example within the process?
Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, what I'm more talking about is that the original issue that we had was that there were a lot of the committees that we had didn't have minutes, or didn't have agendas in a lot of cases. And they were typically the appointed committees, and typically the ones that didn't meet periodically. They met kind of ad hoc, and that was one of the original issues. Now, that never got addressed in this specifically. It talks in general, but it doesn't talk about who's going to take responsibility, again, like what we talked about, for making sure that there, you know, somebody's looking after that, like you said, maybe identifying the issue to the appointing authority if after one communication, nothing happened. So that's, it's a new responsibility for the clerk. And so that's why I'm kind of bringing that up, because that was the original problem. It wasn't with the appointed, the elected committees, it was more with the appointed committees, where there were things that were missing, so.
I mean, I thought it was really the first part of this, where we were trying to figure out how to do the minutes, our own minutes, how do we get those?
Well, that, yeah, that's the other document.
Right, exactly.
It was both. We, the goal had two parts to it, explicitly stated.
Right, and I'm just, all I'm doing is telling you what the genesis of this one was, and it was about the appointed boards not doing minutes, the gap there, and Paul...
And I guess I would ask, are we adding a responsibility to the town clerk, or are we just trying to...
The clerk's offices never chased down minutes. I mean, that's never been their...
That's my point, Paul. That's why I keep on bringing it up, thinking, maybe you'll say something.
Right, but I'm just...
I just want to make sure that we've got the right situation there.
I mean, they're, they're like a repository.
Right.
They're not the appointing authority, you know, we're sort of going in circles. They're not the appointing authority, they're not the statutory authority.
Well, yeah, we're not going in circles. I don't think it should go there unless you're okay with it, and...
Well, like, what I've done periodically is I've sent messages out to committees saying, hey, look, you're behind in your minutes, whether they're elected or appointed, planning board, and I focus on the land use boards because it's more of a liability to the town, Conservation Commission and so forth, and generally, they've kind of...
Pulled it together.
Pulled it together. You're right, the harder ones are, you know, the master plan update committee.
We have a lot of them.
And then, for example, and I'm not even sure if they're applicable, but I'm just saying is, if they don't get their minutes in, and then they stop meeting and they complete their task, then what are we chasing? Because many times, they're relying on volunteers without any, anybody recording the minutes, and then it just becomes, you know, a stress, and then it becomes a stress point for them saying, you know, what are we supposed to be doing? So, you know, so...
The reason this came up, though, was because we do have so many gaps, and we're not complying with the law.
Exactly.
So I don't know that we really have a choice to say to keep going the way we've been going is okay.
Yeah, it isn't. I mean, that's what, Paul, you're the one that brought it out when I brought it up, because I went to start looking to read into some of the committees, and I couldn't find minutes, and that's how the genesis of this particular action came up.
They all mean to get, they're all able to get their meetings posted, so we don't, you know, we don't have violations with them posting the meeting. It's, the problem is...
Well, that's because they can't have the meeting unless they can post it.
Exactly. So, Paul, the problem is the minutes, and that's really what it is.
Right.
And we've had, we've had some committees who've begging for somebody to take minutes, and they just can't find anybody to do it. And then, and as members of this committee know, it's often a big undertaking to produce meeting minutes, and I think that's sort of why it falls through the cracks, is they get behind and then they get overwhelmed.
But, I mean, it's also executive session minutes for some of the land use boards as well. I know when I was on the Board of Appeals for over five years, I don't ever remember once going back and looking through old executive session minutes and determining whether or not they had become releasable. So it, this is also something that, it's really, again, a policy statement, so that when a board member joins a board, they can review this and recognize what their open meeting law responsibilities are. And I think that's really a very important aspect of this.
And so as a policy, as a policy statement, where does the policy belong, regardless of who executes it? I mean.
The problem is, the select board does not have appointing authority over elected boards.
Right.
Right.
So if not you, then who? And I think logically, although technically still no authority, I think the town clerk, you know, at least has some skin in the game, because again, they're the one that interface with the public records, with the Attorney General's office, if there's an open meeting law violation claim. So I think that there's some benefit there. Certainly, town manager is indicating, over the, over time, he has been doing that, and chasing down minutes from some of these boards.
So, I mean, are we asking the town clerk to distribute this document when, at the time, somebody gets sworn in? And, you know, I mean, that, I think, is attainable. I think the bigger question, and the real wrestling thing is, how do you get boards to produce minutes?
Well, and I think, I think when.
And that's not the clerk's job to do.
Well, that's, but that's where this is going.
But, I mean, at a minimum, could it be the clerk's job to bring it to the attention of either you or the select board, to say, you know, this board is behind in submitting minutes, and, you know, somebody needs to have some sort of conversation.
Someone's got to track it.
Right.
But then that would be a tracking thing that they would do.
Right, and they're easy to, we can track them on our website, because when the meetings get, minutes get posted, they're put online. So, I mean, I, I mean, I can, you can throw it to me. I can sit there and track, as I've done in the past, who's not getting their minutes in. The difficult, and I can send out the notices. The difficulty is, how do you get the volunteer committees who look at you like, okay? And that, because when we can't, when we read a list of committee vacancies at every meeting and have a hard time retaining committees, that's where the rubber hits the road, is how do you compel them to, and I don't know what the answer to that is.
I think, I think you change the way you do business. So, so when this is approved, I don't think it just goes to people new signing on to committees. I think it goes to every single member of every single existing board and committee, saying, "we want to remind you that legally, this is what we are obligated to do." And, you know, just to, everybody does great with posting agendas, but just a reminder, here's, and here's some guidance to help you on what the requirements are for meeting minutes, and for executive session minutes, and reviews of executive session minutes, periodic reviews. And I think, too, it stays in here somewhere, you know, the meeting minutes don't have to be a big onerous task. They capture the essence of what was done in the meeting. They're not a transcript. And so I think that's important for people to understand, too, because, I mean, I've been on committees where I've been the clerk. It's not that onerous. So, but I think it's discipline. And so I think there's an awareness step where this goes out to every single existing member of a board or committee. There's a procedural process thing where new members are given this as a guide. You know, I think everybody should be able to read four pages. And then there's a execution piece where maybe the clerk is the place where it's tracked, and sending out reminders, and when they're having difficulty, or if it's you, Paul, if you're going to assume all that, then the appointing authority steps in and helps. Unless it's an elected board, and then, you know, you need a different kind of a nudge, but.
Well, if they track it, and then you were to be the first line of prompting, and then if that doesn't work, then you go to the appointing authority from there. I mean, I suppose that could be a process, but that, again, I would put that in here.
And the elected boards tend to have staff help with the minutes anyways. So that's less of an issue. The executive session stuff, I think, continues to be an issue. And so this is really more of a reminder to them of what their obligations are. And I'm going to presume, once this gets submitted, and everyone's had the chance to review it, that it'll eliminate a lot of the problems.
I think so.
Because they're going to know, and it's going to be there, available to them to review whenever they want.
And it's a threat of the Attorney General is the ultimate hammer? Is that, you know, the end of the day?
I mean.
I just try.
I don't know how much of a threat.
Paul, I think when people, when people step forward to volunteer for a committee, I think they're dedicated to do what they need to do. And some of this, I think, is just awareness that there's a, there's a legal requirement for what we have to do, and this is how we do it. And if you have questions, or it's feeling like you can't do it, then, you know, we'll help. We'll explain it.
I mean, my experience.
We have, the Economic Development Commission hasn't had minutes published for years. I mean, we can't, we can't keep going like that.
My experience with the Attorney General's office is, in particular, when you're talking about first-time violations, or rather, minor violations, it's simply, you know, a notification that you're doing this wrong, and you're instructed to comply with the law.
Yeah.
Repeat offenses and notices of violation by the Attorney General's office is going to become a problem, and could result in fines to board members. So, I mean, I do think, you know, that there is some bite to that, but it's only after multiple violations, generally.
But on the flip side, from the town's standpoint, to mitigate risks, I mean, if we show anybody that we have a policy in place, it's being tracked by the town manager, then when the boards don't comply, they get notices, and if they still don't comply, then it does fall directly on the boards and not on us.
Correct.
And maybe, you know, when you're up for reappointment, maybe this is, if somebody's like deliberately not complying, then we don't reappoint them.
And like you said, Virginia, I mean, it is only four pages, and I think part of the issue might be, you get handed, you know, the 25-page.
Open meeting law.
Yeah, and then who reads that? I mean, you know, maybe you read it one time, and then probably even when you get reappointed, you don't, and then you forget some of the things. So I think having it concise in four, and the important parts of it in the four pages would be helpful.
Yeah, I've heard it a few times, more than I thought I ever would.
And I guess I'd just like to start from the benefit of the Dow position, and say, people want to do the right thing. They're just, they just need their awareness raised of what the right thing is to do.
So to Ken's point, that's why I'm kind of pushing on this, to figure out what the chain of responsibility is for tracking, closed loop, to make sure it's working. Because when we put that in place, back to what Paul Haverdy was mentioning, is, you know, even if there was a violation, they'd be able to see that we have a process in place, and that we are, it is working, if in fact, you know, we're exercising it. So I think that's a huge step in the right direction.
Well, if there's a violation, then it's not working, but.
Well, but there could be a violation from before that we haven't picked up yet. Because, you know, the day we flipped the switch, minutes don't suddenly show up for five years of problems. So there's going to have to be, you know, immediate.
For the grace period.
Yeah, there's going to have to be a kind of a reclamation of what we're doing here. People should have to, you know, the board chairs or whatever should have to, you know, kind of sign off that they understand this.
But it's better that this was being implemented through the directive from the select board, rather than coming from the Attorney General's office.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So is it okay if we said, from a monitoring, closed-loop standpoint, that this will, does this going to reside with the clerk, the process itself? And then, and then as far as monitoring, they'll track, elevate to you? And then if no resolution, then it escalates back to the appointing authority by you? Does that make sense?
I think what Paul is suggesting is he would track.
If you want to track it, you can.
I just haven't, I just haven't had, I haven't, we haven't brought the town clerk into the discussion, so I'm reluctant to sort of say, this is what the clerk's office can take on.
Do you want to take some space to do that, and we can put this on our next agenda?
Yeah, we can do that, and tell me how you want to do it. We can add it on.
But at a minimum, the town clerk should be willing to at least hand this out.
Distribute that, yeah.
I think so.
And I, and I think, too, if we pick a path and it's not working, or we have to figure out, we can change it. We can change how we're doing it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. This needs to be coordination, because as you said, they're distributing the open meeting law, the public records law. We now ask, we're now trying to distribute vision and values to every, you know, so I'm just thinking, we should have some kind of a cohesive packet or package so that everyone.
So outside of where it's going to reside, in the process for following up and tracking and so forth, because we're going to work that off to the side, are there any other comments? Is what we got to get into on this document.
The only edit I have is on timely fashion on page three.
Did I spell fashion wrong?
No, no, no. The third line at the end of the sentence,
Yep.
it says, "three select board meetings." I think it would be three committee meetings, right? Three board meetings.
Yeah, three.
Board meetings.
Yep. Okay.
Well, board or committee meetings.
Board or committee, whatever. I mean, I think the whole policy uses board throughout.
Three public body meetings.
Yeah, it's public body, actually.
Okay, whatever.
Okay, thanks. All right, so I'll make that change.
So then.
And I'll work with Paul on whatever the situation is. We'll draft that into this and try to get back.
If this becomes policy, then does, does it still, should it still reside in the select board policy document, so it resides somewhere? Or does, like, the clerk have its own set of policies, Paul, or? Where would you suggest this reside, to make sure it's maintained?
I mean, I think the, I think the board sets policy. I think the board, select board can set up policy. Direct, you know, direct the manager to, you know, oversee.
Right, but because the document's called the Select Board Policy Manual, would people be that apt to read that? You know what I mean? In other words, track through to find it?
But it's a select board policy. It's in kind of with all your other policies, right?
Yeah, it covers ours, but this is for everybody.
But the second one, I, yeah, I agree. I don't know that it.
That's the right pathway for it, and it doesn't seem.
My.
Ideally, every single board and commission would have this on their website. Right, on each individual page. This should be something that any board member who wants to check on something from their own board, it's right there for them to find. But you obviously also don't want them making their own changes to it. So to an extent, I do think it's something that should stick with the select board or with the town manager. Should be.
I mean, I.
We do think differently.
We have other policies in the, in the board document, even the vision and values one that we added, where it's there so that we maintain it, but the execution is done by Paul and the clerk's office.
So I think that makes sense.
So, I mean, there's a, I see the parallel with this. If, if there needs to be a home for the policy to live, to make sure that it's looked at periodically, the policy can state, Paul, after you have some time to think this over, the policy can state, there will be a, you know, here's the policy for all boards and committees on posting meeting notices, and it will reside with, you know, the clerk will distribute, or however we decide to implement it. But at least the document is somewhere to be maintained. Personally, I would be okay with that approach. Well, so for the next, the next time we have this, do you guys want to, like Paul and Mark, do you want to take a pass at what you would propose the
Yeah.
select board policy language to say?
Sure.
As the introduction, and then we can decide whether the board agrees to take them both on or in the policy document or not? Would that make sense? Then we actually have something to look at. And then, Paul, you can take time to figure out what you think would make sense for you and your staff.
And see what the town clerk feels about it, too, be sure there's not anything we're missing.
Okay.
So before we leave this, are there any other language changes or questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark and Paul. I know this wasn't an easy feat.
Yeah, well, we just want to make sure that we get this in right, so that we actually do have a way of making sure it works.
Okay. So next, we have the, um, the road improvements and acceptance of Charles Way. Sorry, my computer fell asleep. Paul and Paul, do you want to introduce this one?
Yeah. And Gary Presticati, our public works directors here in the audience. Charles Way, as you can probably tell by some of the documents, has been a longstanding unresolved issue. And it sort of had an interest, I know in the 15 years I've been here, it's had an interesting pathway. The synopsis of the story was, the roadway was constructed as a subdivision with a bond decades ago. The bank that held the bond failed, so there was no surety for the town to complete the roadway after the lots were sold. When this first came up about a dozen or so years ago, the adjoining property owner, who had interest in developing portions of the land in the back, sought to have Charles Way completed and improved and accepted, and that would have granted frontage. Initially, the neighbors were adamantly against it. And then, as years went by, and the road condition deteriorated after the roadway surface was somewhat improved, for lack of a better word, when the sewer installation took place, it sort of came around. And now, in contemporary times, meaning within the last year or two, there's been an effort by the adjoining property owner, who's acquired some additional land on North Road, to facilitate the completion and acceptance of Charles Way as a public way. Back then, about 18 months or so ago, we worked with DPW and engineering, had joint meetings with the neighbors and the developer and so forth, had an estimate of what it would have taken to complete the roadway improvements, because over time, there's some issues with drainage, the roadway surface, some markers and bounds have to be set and so forth. And then there were some concerns at the bottom of the way, with the gravity comes down, about some drainage concerns. And then it went away, because the developer sort of didn't push it any further. Now, in the last couple of months, it's come back to the surface. And here's where it sort of is in a nutshell, is the town doesn't have ownership or control of the roadway. The adjoining property owners don't have control of the roadway. There may, the owner of the roadway may still be out there. So that leaves the town sort of in this holding pattern, and it appears, and again, we're going to bring counsel into this discussion, it appears that the way to get this resolved is to get the work performed on the roadway. We can't expend public monies on non-public land. So therefore, if the town were to take the road by eminent domain, then the town could do the improvements, and then return it to town meeting for acceptance as a public way, which then puts it on our Chapter 90 roadway inventory. The cost of that work is probably approaching at least $150,000 at this point. Obviously, the, meaning, everybody's a victim in this story. The immediate abutters who live along the way, they're suffering from a poor roadway, but yet they're not responsible for the fact of the people they bought it from and so forth, you know, that it's not an accepted way. Originally, when this came up, the developer appeared to be willing to absorb the entire cost of the improvement of the roadway, where the town doing some in-kind services, such as the engineering survey and that type of work. Now it's less clear what costs will be borne by whom, which is why I asked, when it came down most recently, well, where's the revised development agreement? And then the development agreement was now, doesn't specify who, what costs are borne by whom. So we're left with the situation where it appears that the process has to be, is the town has to take the road by eminent domain. But before you take it by eminent domain, you want to have the development, the agreement with the developer in terms of the cost reimbursement. And then, once all that's done, then you go back to town meeting to have the roadway accepted. I don't know if there's anything more to add to that, Paul?
Well, it's interesting. So generally, the way that roadways work is there's a statute known as the derelict fee statute, in which a property owner is presumed to own to the center line of a roadway, unless there is something in the deed that indicates that the original developer maintained the rights in that way. And in this case, that's what happened. The deed actually specifically reserves the rights in Charles Way to the original developer. As Paul mentioned, there was a surety that was held by the town. The bank that was providing the surety went under, so that surety failed. We've never been able to collect on it and complete the work on the roadway. And so now, the main issue is that the original developer, which was a corporation, that corporation has been dissolved, and we need to be able to actually identify who retains any rights in the assets of that corporation. And we need to make sure that we give them notification of the taking, because failure to notify them could ultimately invalidate a taking that the town does. So that's the main issue that I see in terms of the legalities of this. We would actually have to do some research. We would actually have to do some research to try to figure out who retains the rights in the roadway. In terms of the memorandum of agreement, I think that Paul, you know, made it very clear. We don't know what the, the apportionment is being proposed at the moment. I don't know that that needs to be resolved before we move forward on a taking. At the end of the day, and Gary can correct me on this, but I, I think when we had this in front of you 18 months ago, or however long ago it was, it was indicated that at some point, the town is going to have to do something about this roadway, one way or the other. There, there are drainage issues that are arising. It impacts our MS4 permit. So one way or the other, whether this developer is going to provide funds to do it or not, I think getting the rights to the roadway through the eminent domain is something that the town should be looking to do. That, of course, doesn't mean that you have to then go forward and do the work and present the roadway for acceptance. So the time to enter into the memorandum of agreement, you know, could still be there even after you've acquired the rights via eminent domain. So it, they don't necessarily have to both occur at the same time. I think it would be better to do it at the same time. So we've got a very good understanding as to, you know, what contributions would be made. But it can be done the other way.
Can you, in the memorandum of agreement, could you not only spell out the cost of who's going to, or who's going to pick up what cost of the fixing and repair of the road, but also have it cover the cost of doing the research and notifying the previous owners?
You certainly could include that as part of a memorandum of agreement. I don't know to what extent the developer is willing to fund the entire cost. I, I think it's very fair to say that the cost associated with the improvements now has gone up probably dramatically from when we were looking at this 18 months ago. Costs of everything have gone up dramatically and construction costs, you know, certainly very much, you know, the forefront of that. So I don't know to what extent, you know, this particular developer is willing to, to fund the entire cost. We don't know what that entire cost is yet because we've got a 18th month, 18-month-old estimate that needs to be updated.
The other concern I have is this is not the only private or unaccepted way in the town. And my concern would be is what you may do on Charles Way may be looked upon on others who are on similar situations. You know, there's a number.
How many defaulted roads are there out there?
Well, it's not such, it, it's not, I, I'm, I'm saying, Ken, I think it could go beyond defaulted bonds. In other words, if you lived over by the, by Hart Pond, you know, and we've had correspondence in the past about those roadways, people saying, hey, it's not wide enough. It's, you know, I pay taxes to the town. I, you know, it's, it's not paved, it's not this. All I'm just saying, it, it makes me a little cautious before we take that leap of, of taking on financial responsibility for improving a road to acceptable standards by the community. And, because I think, you know, as I mentioned, there's some by Hart Pond, there's, there's probably up, some up over by Freeman Lake and other areas of town that I, wondering if people are going to come up with the same thing, saying, hey, wait a minute, I pay good taxes in this town, you know, the road's open, people drive on it, and why, why am I not, you know, where, where's the town funding my improvement? And so that's, that's what has me a little nervous. And it wasn't, I didn't have those concerns a year and a half ago when it was sort of like, you know, the town will just provide in-kind services, but when, if we're now going to expend significant town monies to do that, then I just, it's just my concern, where's it go from there? And it's terrible because these people, on all these situations are, you know, didn't do anything wrong. It's just that they're inherent, they're inheritance of, you know, prior actions in earlier times.
With those comments, what would you see as, and I'm not saying our solution, what would you see as the solution to this issue?
The Charles Way?
If you were a resident on Charles Way, what would you see as your options?
It's almost like a, it's almost, it's very similar to a sidewalk betterment or a roadway betterment where, believe it or not, people get bettered, meaning they pay a fee for the town to improve the, the condition in front of their property. And I'm not saying I want to do that, but I'm just, because here's, here's the concern I have is it's that, it's, you know, if there, you know, the status situation right now is unsatisfactory to everybody. It's unsatisfactory to all the property owners and it's unsatisfactory to the town. The final situation of an approved, accepted roadway that's the current subdivision and roadway surface standards is a benefit to everybody as well. So I guess the question is, is should there be some shared cost, not only by the developer, but, but I guess in some form of a betterment by, and I'm, you know, by the people who own on Charles Way? And I hate to do that because now you're basically saying, you're basically giving them a, a tax, for lack of a better word.
It's like having a sewer put down your street, right? I mean, you.
And there is sewer there, right?
There is sewer there.
But I guess, I mean, do you have, does the town have a legal right to go in there and say, okay, all the residents on this road get to come up with 10 grand to fix the road?
I don't know that the town has a legal right to do that, but we also don't have any.
Wouldn't we if we took it?
We would if, if, I, I think we got a problem if we take it because now we own it.
You don't know what the problem is.
That's the concern with the eminent domain taking. And it's not that my heart isn't there for the, for the people who live on the roadway who have been, who are frustrated because it's taking so long. It's just this dilemma that, that we have of what do we do here? And what's been driving it in recent terms is the developer wants to, you know, you know, to get frontage and, and sell two lots off of Charles Way, which right now doesn't have legal frontage.
So, so continue with your thought. You said, if you lived in Charles Way, it's a betterment, so how would you go about fixing all of that?
I'd have to, I'd have to work with counsel to see if there's a way for some type of a, and I don't even know what the amount would be if some type of a betterment.
I think in the first instance, we need to find out what the cost is going to be.
You don't even know what's wrong with the road, really.
And then we need to find out whether or not this particular applicant is willing to pay the full cost or whether they're proposing to pay something less than the full cost.
Right. And we're getting a, we're having an engineering, an independent engineering company go out there and do the analysis.
So that's already being done?
That's, that's, that's in the works. And so hopefully in a few weeks, we'll have that report because I don't want it to be a case where the town is a vested interest in the report. You know, so therefore, third-party engineering company comes in, it's not doing business in the town.
And we're paying for that?
We'll pay for that, yeah.
And how much is that?
A couple thousand dollars, you know, to go in there.
That's worth having.
And that's worth having. And then we, then we know what the cost is and then we know what it is. The, the sticky part there is what do you do once you get that data? But I think as Paul's acknowledged and I've said, it's, you're probably talking at least $150,000.
Well, then you, you give that data to the gentleman who wants this fixed and see that you, they make your best offer.
Yeah.
So is, is the decision before us tonight, do we move forward with the, the taking without the MOU in place, or do we bring the whole project together and have the, the whole picture? Is that, is that what you were kind of laying out, two different scenarios?
Well, again, there are multiple scenarios. And like I said, I think it's, the ideal approach is to do them both at the same time.
Right.
But I don't think you can vote in favor of doing anything until we get the cost.
Yeah.
Until we have the ability to speak with the applicant and, and see what proportion of that cost they're willing to take on.
But was the request, was the request from, I don't know if they're, are they an applicant right now or whatever I call them? Was the request that we move on, we move forward with an order of taking without having the other pieces in place?
Well, the original request was to bring it to town meeting for acceptance of the roadway. And that can't happen because.
Without.
Till the work's done. So that's not happening next month.
Okay.
So, so, so in light of this, we've engaged an engineering company to go out and assess the roadway. Now that the conditions are ripe, they'll be out there doing that work. We can then come back with that report and then have a discussion in, in terms of how to deal with that cost.
You don't need any action out of us.
No, 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 any action tonight.
You're going to go get the, the amount. You're going to bring it to the applicant or attorney.
Bring it to you.
Whatever.
Yeah, and bring it to the board.
And let us know. But then you're going to also speak with the concerned party and, and come back with hopefully some sort of a number of what they're looking to cover and present all that to us.
Wasn't there?
Next meeting or?
Sorry.
I don't, I don't think it'll be done in two weeks, but it'll probably be next, hopefully next month.
Okay.
Was there a retention issue at one time too?
Yeah, see, that was, that was.
Would that be part of the?
That's going to be, because that was part of the concern is when we, when we're in those meetings years ago, the people at the bottom.
The what issue?
There was, there was.
Oh, retention.
Yeah, one of the parties, it goes back now several years, was concerned that they was having water pooled on their property that was, they felt was a defect of Charles Way. And that was never ascertained to be accurate or not. So that's what I'm saying. You start peeling the onion and it starts getting a little, you know, sticky with trying to satisfy everybody. And I'm not sure that those issues could be, will be resolved if we improve the road to subdivision standards because.
It's a big cost too.
It's a big cost and it's a big drainage issue.
As I recall, there was a lot of money for that particular piece, right?
Gary, is there anything we missed on this that you think of in terms of, you've lived through all this stuff over the years as well as we have? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Okay. Well, I'll come back when we get the report.
Makes sense, Paul, thank you. Okay, next up, we have meeting minutes. First up is the February 22nd work session before we take a motion. Are there any proposed amendments? And I'm going to, once these minutes are approved, I'm going to throw away the flip chart paper because we captured it digitally. Unless anybody wants to put it in their archives, I'm getting rid of it.
We got to capture.
Okay.
We'll take the digital version.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 22nd, 2022 work session meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye, 5-0. Next up, we have February 28th. Are there any amendments before we take the motion?
So I'll approve the regular meeting minutes for the Select Board.
You'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the February 28th, 2022 regular meeting minutes for the Select Board.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Okay, liaison reports. Pat?
I just have a, a couple notifications of ribbon cuttings that we held recently in town. First one was in Vinyl Square at Push Muscular Restoration. This is a, a group of therapists that perform deep tissue muscular treatment. And I'm not going to go into any detail on what that is because I'm sure I would explain it incorrectly, but if you have some issues, they're the people to call. The other ribbon cutting was in the center. It was Crystal Cave, a branch of beetles where you can buy all kinds of crystal and make all kinds of really good stuff with them. So welcome to Chelmsford to both those businesses.
Thanks, Pat. George?
I'll sit.
Yeah, actually, I sat in on the recycling committee meeting last, a couple of weeks ago. And rather than going into the details, because I think they're doing a lot of really good work, just commenting on how well organized they are. I've been looking over their agendas and their minutes for quite some time now, and everything comes out very quickly. It's precise. They're organized and they communicate really well. And they have long-term goals and they really do a good job. So I just wanted to commend them on, you know, what they're working on right now, which is, you know, again, more mid and longer range goals. That's it.
Thank you. Ken?
I'm, I'm good.
I just have one from the Board of Health. They would like to reiterate for the public that on March 7th, the Board voted unanimously to rescind the mask recommendation from September 2021 and adopt the current Mass Department of Public Health guidance that went into effect on March 1st. The information has been posted on the Board of Health webpage. It's been out on a newsflash. If you're having trouble finding it, please see the town website. Thank you. I don't see any press, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the executive session regarding strategy with respect to litigation on Ledge Road, strategy with respect to litigation for PFAF's impact on the North Chelmsford Water District wells. Consider the purchase of real property located at 1 Berrica Road slash 44 Central Square. Review the executive session meeting minutes for the February 14th, 2022, segment 1 through 3, Board of, Select Board meeting, not to return to regular, open session.
I'll second the motion.
Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I vote aye.